Right, we call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to our October edition of our Central 13J Board of Directors Meeting. Why don't we go ahead and start with the flag salute? Darcy, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Central School District's Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card. You should have seen coming in tonight. And there's still time if you want to submit a comment card. When making comments to the Board, we limit that time to three minutes. And we always welcome additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in our policy KL, which is on our website. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you'd like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. So, thank you again for attending. We will get to our public comments or community comments here in just a minute. First, we're going to review the agenda. Last month, we got to a point where there was some confusion about were we interacting with the audience? And I had to clarify, so I'll just do that upfront. Once we get through our public comments, it really becomes a meeting of the Board with public observation. And body language is fine, but we don't want to interact just to keep things on track because we have a lot of things to get through. So, appreciate everybody's attention to that. And with that, let's go ahead and review the agenda.
Yes, we have a couple of changes, but I'll go through that. We are going to start with several appreciations, one with our partners. And then we are going to do some mental health awareness and appreciation for a project that we worked through last year. But obviously, with this month being a mental health awareness month, we want to share with the Board as well. We'll have communication from the floor. We will have standing committees from our Central Education Association. We will do our financial and program reports. And again, we are, there are some specific areas. We're doing some follow-up from the last Board meeting, specifically in the financial perspective. We're going to share some COVID response information, share a little bit more of where we're going specifically with assessment. We did add, although it was in our agenda that we posted on, excuse me, Thursday, in the Superintendent Report, we're going to talk about Division 22, which has moved. We normally do that in February. That's now moved to November 1st, and lights on the agenda this evening. Again, in our consent agenda, we did add a new item. There is a, in the consent agenda, as we talked about before, of the financial report. And then we'll go into our business agenda, specific to curriculum design that we are wanting to prove on. And then we do, we did add to the business agenda, we forgot one of our signatures, the last time we brought you signatures, and we want to make sure we have everyone that's listed on there to move forward with that. And then we'll go comments, future meeting, and then we will adjourn into executive session. Those are the changes in the agenda for tonight.
We did make a couple of agenda top, or agenda changes. We moved the Board Operating Agreement and Superintendent Contract off of the Business Agenda. We'll be discussing the construct of the Superintendent Contract in Executive Session. And then the Board Operating Agreement, we'll talk for a few minutes about that during my Board Report. So, Darcy and I have been talking about that. We have a couple of things to share, and I'd sent everybody email this morning, but we'll give everybody a little bit more time to review some of the changes that we made in that document before we, we'll approve it next month, but I think we're really close. But that's why we just pulled those off the Business Agenda for tonight. Okay, any questions about what we're going to cover? Okay, let's move on with appreciation.
Yeah, so tonight with us, we're very excited at the beginning of the school year. We know that when school's out, you know, not having kids around, the safety and security of our streets or our public, the areas where students cross, those of you that live or have been on 13th, excuse me, 16th Street, know that that can be pretty busy at the beginning of the school year. And every year, with our continued partnership, both with the Monmouth, excuse me, both the Monmouth and Independence Police Departments, we just wanted to take a few minutes to thank them for what they do at the beginning of the school year. And again, I would say throughout the school year, visible in the schools out and about, making sure that cars understand the speed limits of going through our zones and being very visible during that time, which they do every year, as well as also being on-site and greeting kids throughout the school year. So, with that, we have one person that is in-person with us today, and then another that is online. So, we want to just bring them up. With us this evening, from the Monmouth Police Department, is Lieutenant Matt Olson. And then also with us this evening virtually is Chief Mason from the Independence Police Department. And again, we just are going to, as we have done and we will continue to do, because we cannot do this alone, it's really important that with our partners across both towns that we have them. So, they are going to have a certificate of appreciation. This is presented to Monmouth Police Department for demonstrating their community partnership, keeping our roads and communities safer. So, we again, thank you for your partnership. And Lieutenant Olson will hand you this. And thank you very much. And then Chief Mason, we will make sure you also get yours, and thank you for all that you do and continue to do within our community to support the safety and security of our schools. All right, next, next I'm going to bring up Ms. Britta Santoni. And I think Mrs. Rosanna Larson, they're going to come up and share an amazing project that I will, many, many people were involved in. Again, this is not only with what takes place within our schools, but again, with our community partners. And with that, I will turn it over to the two of them to share.
Good evening. Thanks for having us with you. Thank you. Thank you for twinning with me tonight, wearing your shirts in support of this campaign. We are relaunching our Valores Cambio, which is courage equals change. It's a project that we worked on in the spring, but due to grant deadlines and that sort of thing, got to relaunch it this fall. The campaign and the video were planned and created by our own central students, staff, and families. And we get to, today, we showed the video in the high school and the middle school. We made sort of a different approach for the elementary schools. It's a What Is Mental Health video that they'll be seeing in the next couple of weeks. And this month, every Central School District student will get a Valores Cambio t-shirt so that we can all be part of the mental health awareness campaign together.
So, when we originally launched this, it was the last week of school. And we did that at the high school. We had a large event where we moved people through the auditorium. So, we were like, really careful about the numbers that were in there. People came through, though, they were able to get dinner. We had grab-and-go burritos and ice cream, and they were, anybody who came to the event got a shirt, and they got like a bag that promoted the campaign as well. The grant was specifically targeted at our Spanish-speaking families in our community. And so, that's why you'll see that most of the things are in Spanish. And we wanted to do a special thanks tonight to several of our staff members and community members. Maria Martinez, who works at the high school, she's a long-term community member, and she's also a parent in the community. Jessica Flores, who's also a long-term community member, and she works at the high school as well. Liz Diaz, who is a parent in the community. Noelia Rodriguez, who's a former Central Student, who is first generation to graduate high school and first-generation student at Western Oregon University now. And then Odie Campos from OCDC, who's also a long, longtime community member, a parent. So, they were people who gave us really significant input in the planning of the project so that we could have voice from the people that we were wanting to make sure that they've got the message from the campaign so that we would be a little bit accurate in that. So, they were fantastic.
Emily, can you go to the next slide for us, please? Thank you.
So, this is some of that team, and this was the night of our launch. These are people who helped to volunteer, as well as all of the people that we just talked about there. Right, next slide. Thank you.
Yeah, and then this slide shows the video, some of the video production team. So, this, they put in a lot of hours and worked really hard, and we had a lot of fun with sort of the execution and the production of the video itself. So, then Maximo Villanueva is the main character in the video. Jada Diaz is another Central Student who's also in the video. Liz Diaz is her mom in real life and in the video. Victor Perez, Hillary Morris, Gabby Rigolardo, Jessica Flores, Evelyn Flores, Daisy Flores, and then Logan Martin was our filmmaker, our professional filmmaker that helped us with that. And I just, we wanted to make sure we said their names because they did such an amazing job and worked so hard getting this together. I thought it was so good you were going to watch. So, you can probably see a couple of the goals the team identified. We're just normalizing needing help and support sometimes, which is a lot of what we're doing district-wide with our mental health for all. Work is to just normalize, it's okay to need help sometimes. Acknowledge that it's sometimes difficult to ask for help, and that can take courage. And then on the next slide, acknowledge that it can also be difficult to stay present when somebody else shares a struggle with you. That might take courage, too, in a different way, to do things that require change from what we're used to. And to just share our resource, share resources with the whole community so that we can increase knowledge of how to get help when we need it in our local community. So, on the last slide, we have a site up connected to the district website that has the video posted, and then also mental health resources in English and Spanish. So, hopefully, you'll see posters around, you'll see the shirts. We'll keep going throughout this school year to keep those messages going.
And an extra special thanks to Britta for all the hard work that she did to make this happen. She was instrumental in like kind of pulling the team together, being sure that we were getting the type of feedback that we needed, helping to make sure that the voice that we heard was coming from the people who we should be hearing from. And then also to our partners, Central Health and Wellness Center and County Mental Health, Carrie Blum oversaw the grant and kind of helped you and make sure that it was up and going and took care of all the funding. So, we wouldn't have been able to do this without all of the people who were involved. So, thank you.
And just one last sort of announcement, that we were able to hire through our Polk County School-based Mental Health Team, just hired, and she started today, a new school-based mental health therapist, who is bilingual, and will be able to help in our work to connect better and reach our Spanish-speaking families, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britta. Thank you, Rosanna. What a great way to start the meeting.
Yeah.
Both of those presentations.
I saw that video last, last year, I think it was last year, earlier this spring. It's just as powerful today as it was when I first saw it.
Well, that brings us to our communications from the floor. First up, we, do we have Barbara Baker here with us or online? The only tricky part is we're doing it both, both ways now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Sure can. Hi, Barb.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. I'm not going to put the video on because I have a feeling it's going to lag if I do. So, my name is Barbara Baker. I currently have a junior and an eighth grader at Central School District. Both are active in sports. Recently, my daughter was exposed to COVID through a teammate and had been quarantined. At that time, I was sent a very confusing email about when she would be able to return to school. So, I called the district office to get some clarification on that. I was transferred to Ms. Larson's voicemail. I left a voicemail. Ms. Larson called me back within 20 minutes and happily answered my questions in regards to when my student would be able to return to school with or without a negative COVID test. That same day, the 23rd of September, my daughter informed me that her absences were being marked as her being ill. The next day, I called the attendance office to ask about this. I was told that she was not sure and would bring it up to the administration. I just want to say, my daughter was not ill. I sent an email on September 26th, which I know is a Sunday, to Ms. Servigna, asking about the absence code, so I didn't forget on Monday, as well as why the students would be marked absent at all, as they should be able to attend classes online during the situation. I received an email back from her that day stating that she had asked the district office to assign a specific code for these types of absences, but not, but did not respond to my other inquiries. I followed up on the 27th, thanking Ms. Servigna and reinstating my questions that were not answered. The first one, why are students being marked absent when they should be able to attend classes online? And as of right now, I have not received any response in regards to that. My question to the Board and the Superintendent is this, why are students not able to access and attend classes online while they have to quarantine? Remember, these students have no symptoms, but were potentially exposed. With this district purchasing K-12, again, this school year, we have the technology. Why can't kids that are required to quarantine still receive an education? With many children being in multiple different classrooms and in sports, they are likely to be exposed more than once. So, I am sure they won't be missing school for quarantine requirements once, especially after last year, with so many school hours already being missed. One wouldn't think the district would want kids to fall behind in their schooling this year. Sorry, because the district haven't, because the district doesn't have a plan for children who are in quarantine. I was able to keep my child's absences down to the minimum amount of days, four days, due to jumping through hoops to get her tested, and luckily, the test results were back within a few days. But this could have been taken up to 14 days if I wasn't able to get her tested while working. My child was not given her missing assignments until she was physically, until she physically returned to school. So, the entire time she spent waiting at home for the quarantine period to be over, she had nothing to do for school purposes. Not all students are able to get the vaccine, whether the reason may be age, religion, medical, et cetera. They still deserve to get the same education as those that have been vaccinated. The Central School District has really dropped the ball on not allowing students to receive an education while waiting the allotted number of days because they were potentially exposed. Students deserve better. All students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Erin Baumgartner.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you today. My name is Dr. Erin Baumgartner. I am the parent of a fifth grader at Monmouth Elementary School and a seventh grader at Talmage Middle School. And I am also a biology professor. And as such, I am here today to thank, commend, and encourage the School Board of Directors to continue the mask mandate that is keeping our kids and teachers safe. The evidence shows us that schools with strong mask mandates are able to stay open while schools without are having major outbreaks and returning online. I know that there are some in our district who perhaps have received misinformation or partial information. Those individuals are selfishly framing masking as an individual choice. But our schools are communities where our children are not only learning academics, but also how to care for one another. It is important that we continue to show our kids that we don't cave into bullying, that we don't accept falsehoods, and that we make choices not just for ourselves, but for the good of our community and for those who, as the previous speaker mentioned, may not be able to become vaccinated. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, Matt Olafson, do you want to address for? Switched costume.
I didn't want to be confused. Yep, thank you, guys. I wanted to come here just to introduce myself as Matt Olafson. I took over recently the CYS Youth Basketball Coordinator, something that has been run by Lisa Trivino for many, many, many years, and she has done a phenomenal job. And I don't think I'm going to be able to do as good. But in order for us to continue on that, it's imperative that we continue our partnership with Central School District in allowing us to use the facilities. Our basketball program cannot hold 30 teams in our community like we have in the past without the continued partnership with Central School District. We've submitted a lot of our policies, and I'm just waiting on the agreement to get signed. And I just wanted to thank you guys for that continued partnership and hope that we can get that agreement signed shortly so that we can get out to the community and keep these kids playing basketball, because there's a lot of kids that, that missed a whole year of it, and we want to see it continue. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Then do we have Rebecca Jaffrey-Jay?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, as the previous speaker did, to say thank you to all of you volunteers who serve on the Board of Education. I know a lot of time and effort goes into deciding policies, budgets, and setting goals for a school district. I wanted to say thank you for following the state's standards for opening school this fall. I know the pandemic has challenged all of you to find ways to have students and teachers and staff back in the buildings and still protect their health and safety. I thank you for asking all members of the student body and all staff to wear masks inside the school buildings. We know this simple action does stop the spread of the coronavirus and helps keep everyone a bit safer. Distancing and disinfecting the buildings has been a big hurdle, and I thank the district for working to find solutions for these problems. I do not have any children or relatives in school here, but I do want those in our schools to be safe as possible, because I do interact with people who do have children in school or who work in the schools, or who have family who work in the schools, driving school buildings, driving buses, serving meals, teaching classes. Their health affects my health and that of the entire community. We share the same air, and this virus is spread through the air we breathe. So, it is important to minimize exposure in all of our interactions. Thank you for being mindful of these facts.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you very much.
And then, do we have Alan McKeel? McKeel?
I'm just going to read a statement. Do this without fogging up. So, I'm Dr. Alan McKeel from Monmouth. I'm retired Dean of Libraries for Western Oregon University. I can't talk this evening because I heard that recently individuals have come to complain about how the School Board and Superintendent are making wrong decisions about caring for students. I wanted to let you know that I appreciate the dedication that the School Board, Superintendent, teachers, and staff have shown the children of Monmouth and Independence. Over the past COVID years, your work has kept our students' learning safe, and I commend you for that. I'm a dean, or as, as a dean, you say. I know you have to make hard decisions that look out for the best interests of others, and that your decisions aren't going to be popular with everyone. But all along, you have kept as your, kept, kept as your focus, the safety and education of our children. While you may get negative responses from some, please, now that many of us appreciate your efforts and support, the School Board and Superintendent. I have wanted to thank you for your work focusing on equity and inclusion in our schools. The healthy future of our community relies on having young people who know they are important and valued, valued members of our community. This happens from having teachers and a curriculum that recognizes contributions of the students' varied cultural backgrounds by providing equity and ensuring that our students are qualified educators who will provide them. I know that creating schools with an equitable and inclusive environment is your objective, and I appreciate your vision and determination to accomplish this in our schools. I hope COVID soon subsides, and you will be able to get back to this noble work of making our schools welcoming and inclusive. Again, to the school board and superintendent, thanks for your dedication to our children. Unfortunately, my grandchildren don't live here, but I would be delighted if they were students here because you are helping make Central School District safe and inclusive. While I don't have family members in schools, I do appreciate your efforts for kids in my neighborhood that I do know. I should say your thanks to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that completes our public comments for tonight. We'll now move into our standing reports and programs. So we'll turn it over to the superintendent to introduce our first report.
Yes, with us this evening is Central Education Association, I believe. We have a report or? Yep, okay.
Hello, can we see me now? Okay, I took just a second there with the things opening up and moving around. Are you seeing my presentation? Oh, there, it starts right now. And then I think I just need to ask for the slide to move on when I'm ready, and I am. This is the Central High School Building Report. We have a whole bunch of stuff. I'm going to try and get through it in a timely manner. A lot of people had a lot of stuff that they wanted to share and have people know about. So our creative writing classes and the CHS Creative Writing Club were awarded a grant through the Ash Creek Watershed Control District to create an anthology of poems about Ash Creek or watersheds as metaphors for the important moments in our students' lives. Students will not only create the contents of the anthology, but they'll learn all the elements that go into editing, producing, and marketing a book. So keep an eye out for the news of a big launch party and a signing this spring. That's pretty cool. Oh, perfect. CHS Pep Band has played music at its first football game in 23 months. Very excited. That is not our Pep Band picture. That is a generic photo stock Pep Band. But I know Ed Probst was super excited to be able to play at our football games. Our ELD classes have just finished a combined study of Mexican Independence Day, Johnny Appleseed, and now we'll learn a little bit about Oktoberfest. We're excited to take the ELPA screener, and many more ELs are reading more and learning better. There are some teachers that just gave me some pictures with very little stuff, just to show some of the cool things we're doing. So this was a tallest hat contest that was done during a fun Friday as we're building a community within our classrooms. And you can see that was their tallest hat. Pretty impressive, done with just a few pieces of paper and tape. Animal Science students have been learning about common livestock identification practices and designed various styles of swine housing facilities. You can see on the left there a swine housing facility. Our yearbook staff was able to purchase eight new digital SLR cameras from Focal Point Photography in Dallas. And with money we've earned in the last five years since we've done the fall release party and increased book sales, this will help us up our photography quality as well as increase presence at events since more students will have access to equipment. Students are so excited and already have great plans for the 2022 yearbook. And you can see the 2021 yearbook, front and side views. FFA is doing their soil judging with pictures. Our Health Occupation Club just had their first meeting since the pandemic began. Students are excited to start engaging with guest speakers, learning more about different health careers. For the month of October, students will be putting together a pink ribbon event at the high school for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This is Mrs. Granham's PSP modeling some of our new shirts that we gave students. You can see they're very excited about them. I didn't have specific photos, but I know CHS sports are competing with in-person fans. Very exciting. I've been able to go see almost all of the different groups that are competing for fall sports. And then winter sports starts in the middle of November. So exciting stuff for athletics at Central High School. Go Panthers. This is our watershed ecosystems investigations. You can see that they're looking at how water sheds in different ecosystems. Like I said, I wasn't given a lot of information. Ms. Laster's Spanish classes went from not having a chance to practice their interpersonal speaking skills last year due to being online to presenting skits in front of the class in the middle of Week Two. Each group received a two clap afterward to recognize their big jump. Here you can see our FFA officer team placed first with all officers receiving the Outstanding Presentation Award for their office position at Lower Willamette District Rituals Contest. Implementation of new tech in social studies and language arts is going well. The new tech allows many of our teachers to begin a more mobile and wireless practice in the classrooms. And we now offer French at the high school. It's very exciting to have more than one foreign language that we can let students choose from, and they made a name alphabet poster. You can see some of the words and images there. So that is some of the awesome things that we are doing at the high school with CEA and the teachers and educators that are there. Thank you so much for letting me present to all of you. I really appreciate it. And keep up helping out CHS and Central School District.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next, we are going to the, we're going to start with our financial review, and then we will move into some of our program reports this evening. So I will turn it over to Ms. Coates.
This evening, under reports, first of all, is Alex Singer with a food service update for you, Nutrition Services. I believe he's online. Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to bring you the first update of the school year. We've added four new staff members to replace staff that have moved on to other opportunities. And it's seen everybody's fitting in really well. It's been really nice. The big thing I wanted to talk to you guys about would be some of the supply chain issues we're facing. You may have heard in the news about supply chain issues affecting, you know, nationwide. And they do hit home here. You may have seen empty shelves in the grocery stores. And, you know, they reached us as well. We've had issues with not knowing what's going to show up on the truck to deliver. So we've not been able to do menus this year so far because of inconsistencies. We put in orders and, you know, it's a guess what'll show up or if anything will show up. We've tried to take some different routes to get around it. We've actually worked with a couple manufacturers for direct delivery, bypassing our distributors. So just, we're doing everything we can to continue feeding nutritious meals and getting past all these problems. One thing that we guys, we already spoke about was we're continuing to do no-charge meals this year for all students, both in and out of the building. Now, the waivers have allowed us continued use of different methods to feed. So not only are we feeding all the kids in the building, we are continuing to feed children 1-18 that are not physically attending school. We're partnered with the Gate Youth Association, and they are helping us. We're partnering together to continue feeding weekly meal packs to families that have children that either not attend in person or that are younger to help feed those in our community. That's about it, other than just my normal financial report. Last school year, we served, for the entire year, 423,836 meals during the July 1st to June 30th date, which is pretty on par in a pre-COVID year, which is better than a lot of our colleagues in other districts. Do you guys have any questions for me today?
Thank you for doing such a thorough job.
No, thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Must be really hard to try to feed people when you don't know what kind of food you're going to get.
Well, we've been a little inventive, but we're making sure we always meet all their guidelines. We've not had to short the people. We've got good sources. We're using, like I said, groups, orders, places we've never ordered from, and just try to be real. You know, trying to find new sources to keep everybody fed and working with our colleagues and with the state to try to help ways to find us, get what we need.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am copied on all of the emails that come out from our vendors, from the state, just constantly explaining what to expect or what not to expect. And Alex, in addition to worrying about staffing and all of the things he already does, has done a phenomenal job of responding to this. We're very fortunate, and again, fortunate to be able to continue to serve students for free, all students in district or in our community. Transportation Report, and Jen included information in your Friday report regarding activity and athletic program transportation. This is something we knew we would face a little bit of an issue with this year, and it has been we are not alone in facing issues with transportation. Not only staffing, but scheduling has been quite a challenge. So took some time and tried to think through options for our, not only athletics, but for any activities that might come up. And so that report was included in your Friday report, basically offering our administrators some different options for volunteer drivers for, and particularly for hiring out third-party transportation. Very little of that's available. Oftentimes, the companies that contract for school transportation, such you may see Bitco or for student buses on the road, they can't offer us help, right? They call us, asking if we have extra drivers. And even, I don't know if any of you have traveled, but rental vehicles are nowhere to be found. But in fact, if we can find some, we have determined a way to, we've opened a corporate account for Enterprise Rent-A-Car. We have calculated sort of what the district can contribute to that out of the general fund and what might need to be made up with fundraising, but also really verified that any driver of those vehicles is covered by insurance. So that was a big concern in my mind. But even volunteer drivers are covered as drivers under our program. So I've given this information to our administrators. Hopefully, we can all work together to try to give more opportunities to more students. But now up to finding other resources that are having a hard time out there. Just coming up with options as we.
And I'm going to check. Can you hear me, Emily? I'm going to do a mic check real quick. Yes? Okay, I will add, this afternoon, I sit on the Oregon School Activities Association Reclassification Committee, and we had another one, an open meeting, and this was the largest topic, is just the difficulty of transportation across the state. Again, everybody looking at all of these options, rental, third-party. So it is a big, it was a very large conversation as we heard public comment today from athletic directors across the state. So I think we'll continuing not only here, but across the state to figure out how we're going to continue to keep athletics and activities going while we're working through these unique situations during these times. So again, I think it's important to share that because we're not alone in having to figure these pieces out. It is really a conversation across the state that we're dealing with.
And individual volunteers are also able to sign up and transport their students and other students in their vehicles. They would sign up through our regular volunteer process, which now will include questions about their vaccine status. We have determined that in our smaller vehicles, we're not going to be able to accommodate the medical exceptions. So in our buildings, we have, we allow folks with medical exception, medical or religious exceptions to work. But in these smaller rental cars or vans, we are going to require people to be vaccinated to transport students. So that information is, will be entered into the online volunteer system, and drivers need to get a copy of their driving record, which they can order online for a buck fifty, and provide information about their insurance. But that's always been the case for us as far as volunteer driving. We're just going to try to broaden that request and ask folks if they're interested in transporting students for activities. We are able to do that. So other questions about the?
I, real quick, we're still, under the rule that students can't drive students.
Students cannot drive other students.
Yeah, they can drive themselves.
Even if all the parents sign off, that is prohibited.
Okay.
Yeah, we can drive themselves and siblings, but. Yeah. The other thing that I wanted to just kind of give you a brief update was on our facilities assessment planning. And I'm sorry that a written report just got back from our consultants on sort of their most recent work that will be available to you. But generally speaking, you know, we had a timeline for doing our long-range facility assessment. We hired the firm brick architecture. And on our original plans, by September, we would be conducting some small group or community, get community input, find ways to get a lot of community engagement about our facilities. We're behind that schedule, but we are not behind in the sense that we had a hard deadline. Our hard deadline is February, so we're a little delayed. We haven't gotten there yet. But what the consultants did do the last week of September was they met with each of the principals and toured each of the buildings. And the purpose of that was to conduct what's called an educational adequacy assessment. We have the facility conditions assessment that was done by engineers. And this is really talking about instructional space, common spaces, administrative spaces, supporting students, you know, activities, and even, for example, traffic assessments and things like that, right? How are their schools meeting the needs of these things? And so the principals filled out a little self-assessment, and then the consultants went through with them, asked additional questions. That report will be prepared soon. I'd hope to have it for you by tonight. The consultant had a few more things they wanted to respond to in there, and we'll get that out. And the next step really is to talk about setting up those community engagement pieces. It's the challenge with that, that we've got community chats to re-energize. We also have, as part of the community chat, we are gathering input, sort of feedback about a lot of our programs. Our student investment account, as you remember, required a lot of community input, and it's time to re-up that. So we've got a lot of things to cram together to go out and do outreach in the community. To go out and do outreach in the community. Uh, but that's the next thing that'll be coming up is trying to think of. Who you all know that you would want to make sure if they are groups. Um, or individuals that be invited uh, to these open forums regarding what our community sees. As needs for our buildings. So continuing the information gathering process and moving forward. Little behind where we would have hoped to have been, but. It's still going on. So you haven't heard much lately, wanted to give you an update about.
Have a ballpark uh, date when those are gonna happen?
We don't yet.
Yeah, we're, we're continuing to talk through that, but all I also think as we talk with our leadership teams and again. With the capacity of what we're still working through and some changes we have made. Um, because of some of the things that we were having, happening at the schools. Again, we do, are, are having outbreaks and having to work through those while keeping buildings open. Um, so we're again trying to stay focused on that to keep buildings open. I do think um, potentially at our PLC. In October, uh, I think we could have some, set some time aside to have this topic and make sure. Looking at, at that point, we might be able to list out a few dates and then be able to move forward from there. Um, so again, I would just offer that up as an option to continue this conversation.
If I could just make a, an observation, uh, known for those, I know that a lot of the Latino community. Uh, goes back to Mexico during the latter part of December through January, so.
Earlier, November.
To include that group.
Mm-hmm.
Would require that, you know, we have those, those chats around, based around those times. I think that would be very important.
Nope, that's perfect. Thank you. All right, next up, I am going to bring uh, Mr. Clark forward. Um, as requested by the board, we are going to uh, throughout our board meetings, give a snapshot of some of the. Things that we are still working through uh, from a COVID response. Uh, so we are going to just share a couple of quick slides with you of where we are. And then some of the changes that we have done uh, or made since school has started. So Mr. Clark, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, it's exciting to come and just share some of the, the data. This is a snapshot of the outline of our uh, COVID nineteen data. We have a lot of in-depth, in-depth information that comes from this. This snapshot shows our. Uh, our buildings, our schools, our students and our staff. And if we take a look and use Ash Creek, the first one is an example and you can see the first uh, number is positive cases. Let me take a look at close contacts. And the last one, the green one is vaccinations or what we call vaccinated saves. So I'll give you a second just to take a look there, but you can see the, the student in the first column and the staff in the second column. In positive cases. Close contact quarantines. And in the third column are vaccinated saves.
Could you, could you uh, go into a little more detail as what a vaccinated save?
Sure. Yeah, let's use the staff as an example. You can see that um, we've had a pool of nineteen staff. Okay, that have been positive. They tested positive for COVID nineteen. We've had five staff that were considered close contacts. So they were within that three foot, three to six foot. More than fifteen minutes. And then the last is sixteen vaccinated saves. These were staff that would have been considered. Uh, close contact quarantines if they weren't vaccinated. And the fact that they were vaccinated, uh, we consider those saves.
So they.
So that's out of the twenty-four or on top of the twenty?
That's an extra. Yep.
Okay.
Sixteen staff members.
I, I like that number.
We, we do too.
Not that, not, I mean, I like having that, that statistic, I guess.
You bet. You look at the elementary, you know, we have zeros for the elementary schools and of course, we're, we're still working on those age groups. And then again, we're getting a bigger group from the high school and more from the middle school.
Jason, what's the timeframe of this data?
This is uh, actually, we took the data up to Friday of last week, the eighth. Like all the data right up to the eighth.
And this has been since the first day of school, so.
Yes, thank you. So the students, that was really the last week in August. We started collecting staff data the first week in August when they came back.
And we, again, there, we have data today, but I, we just wanted to do a cutoff. So I mean, this is a daily update. Uh, so these numbers probably from today, I haven't had a chance to meet with the team, but I'm assuming that these numbers are, have changed today.
Change, yeah, they have. Yep.
Do we see, I mean, this is a short period of time, basically, but do we see any trend up or down?
I'd have to say all buildings are very busy right now. Yeah, they really are. Um, you know, there's just. I think the, the next slide will show you the process a little bit that we go through, but in a, you know, a district where we have, you know, a lot of siblings and the domino effect kicks in and it's. Yep, we. And I'd like to brag about this process a little bit. Um, and it, it's hard to start without a shout out to our Polk County Health Department teammates. Who we talked with on a daily basis, um, sharing information, getting um, advice from. The process involves, uh, we have building uh, COVID teams at each one of our buildings. They collect information. Most of the time it comes from a parent or a guardian that shares that they have a positive or a close contact. Situation. The, at that point, we have a Google form that takes us through just some key questions. That Polk County Health Department's looking for, um, and it helps us as we track um, other siblings and students in the district. Uh, at that point, the district COVID response team. It's a good process that we've moved into. Uh, they get some initial feedback from, at the building level. And then they are forwarded to the district COVID response team. And we have a team here led by Emily Mensor. Um, and we reach out to those families with the plan. And uh, once that um, exposure date is set. We're able to give them a pathway back into school. One of three pathways that I'm sure that you've seen, um, that we share. So um, it's a, it's efficient. Um, we uh, we have kids coming all the time. Uh, we feel like if, if we have a, a student that's not in school, we, it's our job to get kids back in. Uh, so we want it to be safe, want staff to be safe. Um, there's just, it's pretty black and white as far as the, the guidance on that and we just. It's working well. The results, as I said, it's that consistent communication for families. Um, more time for building staff to focus on learning. And again, it is, you can imagine a scenario at, at a school. If all of a sudden they were to get three or four calls a day and they are scrambling to figure that out. We have a process now that we go through. And it's streamlined and it's efficient.
Jason, I have a question for you. When you're talking about uh. Uh, pathways, getting back into class. Kind of bringing up the, one of the first speakers that we had, um, when they were asking about, I think it was Ms. Baker. Asking about having online ability to, to learn while in quarantine. Is that? Isn't that something that we have? We have an online function. Why wasn't this, this other student able to?
The scenario on that, I know that we, one of the boxes we checked as far as making sure the, the kiddo has their Chromebook.
Right.
Most of the classes have.
I, I thought that's what our.
Through classroom, there's communication with the teacher that students tend to be out. So, yeah, it.
And but I will do some follow-up on that because again, in conversations with the, with the principals, they are. Uh, again, from an elementary and sending work home, again, at the middle school and the high school, obviously we have. A lot of the staff has moved to, to Google, Google, Google classrooms and so having access there. So again, we'll, we'll follow up on that to make sure. I, I want to be clear, we, we made this change probably a week into school, uh, as we started to see cases increase. Um, we wanted, it was too much at the building level. They need to focus on instruction. And so we, we made a big shift. Uh, to have them do some first steps and then have it come down to the district office for more consistency of communication.
It is confusing to try to explain these dates and we, you know, trying to have our administrators and our buildings. Keep up with what those different paths are. Um, having Jason and Emily who do this all day, every day. And speak with Polk County has been a huge shift in our ability to really help families understand what happens next.
I will add to that, we are almost done with a communication uh, to try and help explain it. It is. Quite complex of the options that you have if you are a close contact. It's not a clean, black and white.
Sure.
And I think that's some of the, the pieces we're just trying to, to clear up and support our families of all three of those options. Um, if you are a, a close contact, if you're a positive case, there's only one pathway.
Right.
Uh, but it's the close contacts where we're, we're having to do a little bit of education with our. Uh, families and, and continue to walk through and support them on what that looks like.
I think I saw Byron hand up.
Is that one of the three?
Coming up.
It is, yes. Uh, that's good timing. Uh, we had a discussion on that today, uh, with that team from OHA and. We're ready to move forward. We have some consent forms that we're finalizing, uh, that we'll work for all of the testing, diagnostic and screening. And since we push that out, we'll be ready to go. So it's gonna be soon.
The, so the rapid test is what we use in the building if, if a student, uh, so that's again, when we say rapid, you're gonna hear us say either rapid or diagnostic. That is the same, same test. The formal word is diagnostic. Um, there's a screening test that what we are moving towards, um, where parents would sign up. Uh, that's the form we're trying to finalize to make it clear. It's a, it's, there's some complicated pieces to it. And so we want to try and make it as clear as possible for our. Our families, so uh, not to cause more confusion. Plus we, it's in English and Spanish because that was really important to us. They, OHA has done a. Phenomenal job with that. Um, so I do, we're, we're pretty close to being able to take a first step with that. And if a parent signs up. Then they would be able to uh, gain access to those screening tests, which would happen uh, once a week. You'd get that test. You'd have, get it on, and again, I'm making this up right now because we don't have the finalized dates, but you might get it on a Tuesday, that evening you take it. And Wednesday, you're turning it into us. And you, you know, we have a courier that would come and pick it up and then we would be picked up. Or excuse me, results are within thirty-six.
Twenty-four to forty-eight hours, yep. Receive the information via your app, uh, phone app for the parent, one way. Byron.
Do you have any idea of the? Level of participation we're gonna have?
We use uh, our neighboring school district, very low. Yeah, you know, started off, you know, single digits, two, three percent. Um, for our friends in Carvallo School District. Um, and it, it grows, um, as word gets out and the need. Um, but we anticipate it starting small and, and growing.
And that basically cuts a week to.
Yeah, if the, the test on, if you're a close contact, if on day five, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, right? Or you go ahead and explain day five.
That's, that's it. If you're a close contact, you can test after the fifth day. And if it's a negative test, return on the eighth day.
So if you're signed up for weekly testing, you're, it's gonna be kind of close to that five day to have a test available to you.
Have those. Other districts who implement this already have basically jumped. Just because if you're asymptomatic, you're not gonna take the test. And so.
The rapid test.
Right, right, yeah. I, I don't have that. That's a good question. Sure. You know, an example, we keep track of our rapid test each day. We did five as a district today. So we keep track of those, five negative rapid tests a day. Kidos had symptoms, brought to the office, tested. Um, sent home to monitor symptoms. Um, and we may see them tomorrow or the following day. We recommend twenty-four to forty-eight hours. If they've tested.
And I think, and I think that's the, as we continue to have this, right? We, the, one of the things that. Um, you know, having a negative test, but still having symptoms, it is being uh, in conversation with Polk County and the Oregon Health Authority. That students still go home until they are clear of uh, any symptoms. And so again, I, I, I want to be clear. I'm very appreciative of the community. I'm going to continue to say this, of families doing a phenomenal job of. If their students are sick, they are keeping them home and we, we appreciate that. And then working with us if we do have those tests and, and they do have to come pick them up. So it's not, this is not easy still. I think we're doing good things and being able to keep our buildings open because of the things that. Um, are happening with our families, what our schools are doing, and then just the follow-up process that we've built, uh, to keep buildings open.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, just to share where we are with assessment. Uh, Mr. Brian Fenery will be joining us. Give a quick update of where we are.
Good evening. Emily, if you want to move on to the next one, so we're gonna do a brief update on universal screener. So, um, this, the screener that we are doing across all of K through eight, the two screeners that uh. I'm gonna talk about tonight are the reading and the math. Uh, the reading screener, um, we'll use an example uh, tonight to talk a little bit about how that works. Um, some of the purposes are up there for you to, to look at, to help measure the current skill and knowledge levels. Uh, I would say more than any other year, this is gonna be something that's really valuable for us to, to be looking at. Um, because of the variety of, of what we will be seeing as far as where students are. Um, uh, depending on how much time they've been in person or been in our buildings over the past few years. So this, this tool is gonna be especially valuable to this, to us this year. Um, help us look at the instructional needs, um, down to the level of the students, as far as what the students need. Um, into small groups about, uh, groups of students that we could do, um, different types of intervention for. All the way to the whole class and allows us to look at this across the district and cross grade levels. And help us to do our individual planning, whether it be for what we're doing in, in the, the classroom with all students. Or in, in our breakout groups for our interventions that we're doing, integrating in math. And it gives us benchmarks to look at, uh, throughout the year to see where, um, where our students, where our groups of students and individual students at the beginning of the year. The middle and, and the end of the year, um, beginning to help us to, to look at adjustments we want, middle to look at that, that progress and adjustments in the end of the year. To look at, at what was accomplished, but also to look forward to the, the following year and the plans that we want to make so that we're making sure. To again, to continue to have that progress happening at the individual and uh, group and grade level and district level. Go on to the next slide, please. Some of the questions that get answered really reflect what, what I just spoke to is that we're able to see those current strengths and, and levels. Look at the specific skills that are, are targeted and be able to kind of drill down to that. Um, like I said, both for the student, but also at the group level and to use all of our interventions in our, our classroom time really effectively. How can we organize those, those groups and also adjust uh, throughout the year? Go on to the next slide. Our training dates that we've accomplished already, um, September, um, we've uh, did reading. Math and, and early October, we're doing data reports, um, tomorrow, actually, it's October twelfth. Already can't believe it's already the twelfth, but, but we're doing that, that then and uh, progress monitoring will be the next step after with universal screen. Uh, trainings are done. Uh, we will have um, our first wave of assessments done for reading by October thirty-first. And then we'll be engaging um, both the district level and the building level on using that data to inform our next steps and, and working and. Supporting our students. You can see the, the rest of the dates up there and the math will be a little bit later because of the, the difference in when we did the training for the math. So doing that one uh, shortly afterwards. And this just gives you a really quick snapshot of some of the information. I actually was in a staff meeting uh, this morning. And it uh, was brought up by a couple of the, the folks that are gonna be doing the, the training in, in the building. Uh, talking about the value of the, the reports that uh, we'll be getting from FastBridge. What it gives is uh, down to very specifics in reading as far as areas. It also um, allows you to see which reading programs are recommended or intervention programs that we're using are recommended. It gives you a plan uh, for how you might address that with groups of students, with individual students. And um, specific interventions to try, lesson plans to try with it. And we're also able to adjust this to the specific curriculum that we're using. So for example, uh, some of the. Uh, system forty-four and other reading programs that we're using in the buildings, we're able to crosswalk it to this and put that into the system. So it's, it's a, a flexible system and, and how we can use it to our specific uh, needs and instructional approaches that we're doing as well. And um, again, it, it gives you ideas for how to progress monitor. So in. And again, it it gives you ideas for how to progress monitor. So in between those three times that we're doing that work, we're doing intervention. And then we're doing progress monitoring to make sure that those interventions are having an impact that we would like to see. So we're really excited to see, I'm really excited to see the 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 data that we're going to get from that that first wave. Work with the schools and supporting them and and using that and be able to come back to you to to share some of the work that we're doing with with this with this tool. Questions? Yeah.
Is this, are they a large enough organization where they have enough clients where they can? Benchmarking, categorizing similar situated school districts and how you compare to where they're at.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. They do. They're they're large enough that you have a very large population sample so that you're able to do that. Yeah.
Byron, the other piece I would say is some of that will also come with the the five lab dashboards. Again, we can do that on the financial side. For example, the what was in the Friday report with athletics and the funding. That that this same approach, again, both in FastBridge and in. Five Lab as we keep moving forward to be able to give data both internal and then as we move for forward externally in the future.
And then when you also, when you're looking at the fact that we'll be testing all of our students, K through eight, that's going to give us a lot of. But they do have a large sample set.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Brian. Who who participated in the training? Who was trained?
That's my question.
So we had, we had representatives from each of the buildings that participated in that. A lot of the toeses and are are. Every building have at least one administrator that participate in that. Well, some of the teachers that have. Particular background knowledge, content knowledge.
It was kind of a train, train to trainer.
It was. And so then they they in turn are going to be working in their buildings to to do that training.
Follow up. How is the staff responding to this? Do they see this as additional work? Or did they see this as like a major new tool in their toolkit?
I would, I would say neither. I'd say it's it's replacing some work that that they they've done in the past. They have done some. Work in the past, not necessarily to the extent that this is, but they have used SRI, for example, to to do some testing. What I what I heard today, and I don't want to like generalize it for for everybody. What I heard today is that. They really like the reports, the the people that did the training really liked the reports that they saw so far. They're going to learn about more of the reports tomorrow that are available there. So I think that what I saw or heard from people so far is that more usable. More usable right away as far as being able to to look at how we can take this data and not just know where there are problems, but know. Here's some steps that we can take to address those. So I'd say the usability was higher. But it there there will be some additional work involved. But with there's also additional work with some of the interventions that we're we're doing this year as well.
And I would add to that, Steve, that last spring, as we were meeting with buildings and and leadership and. They know that it's a it's a need that they wanted to fill and just to be able to move forward with it. I think that's a good part of it. Again, it is a little bit of a shift. But I think it's going to be helpful to to do our planning and and supporting them moving forward.
Yeah. And they, I I'll tell you this, too, as we've had about roughly about twenty. Five-ish people or so in in those those train the trainers and. They've just, they've been wonderful to work with. They've asked really good questions and engaged throughout practicing and taking it back to the building. So I really appreciate. The effort they put in and the and the principles and and coordinating the efforts into the buildings, too.
Yeah, as we were talking about it at the PLC meeting earlier. It's just such an important thing to do this year is to get a good assessment of where kiddos are at. It's just like. Beyond just getting the kids back into school, this is the thing. Really need to understand where they're at, what we can do. So it's great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is actually my report, but I'm actually going to turn that over to Mr. Clark. And as he comes up. He is going to share out, we're going to sort of do this in tandem in regards to Division twenty two. You normally get Division twenty two in February. So is your, you know, again, this is one of those pieces that. We're moving to November, excuse me, October, because it is now due. To the state November first. And then we will have things posted up on the website by mid-November. So again, this is required by state law. It is really focusing on. Key areas that we need to be in compliance. We'll talk a little bit. We are out of compliance in a couple of areas, but some of that I knew we would. And I shared that last spring, but we'll we'll also talk through that. So that I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark to begin the presentation.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Division twenty two standards. I get excited about this part every year as a the project manager and a a process that we go through to collect data. And to check the boxes of assurance for Oregon Department of Education. This evening, I'm going to share a little bit about just an intro into Division twenty two. The steps of assurance that we use. The project objectives in collecting information for compliance. And then just how we did on our report of the compliance this year and our next steps. With that being said, again, Division twenty two, as Dr. Vista mentioned, we usually do this in November. They've asked us to move it up to an October date this year. On November first, the VCHR school districts are to report to their local school board the district standings with respect to all Division. Twenty two standards for public elementary and secondary schools set forth. In Oregon Administrative Rule five eight one oh two 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 three oh five. Next slide, please. There are really three steps to the assurance process that we use to complete the Division twenty two process. The first being school district superintendents. In this case, I am reporting. To the local school board, the district's compliance with all Division twenty two standards for the twenty. Twenty twenty one school year by November first, twenty twenty one. So again, last year's compliance. Also, school districts will post the community report on compliance. With public school standards to their website by November first, twenty twenty one. And lastly, school districts complete and submit the annual Division twenty two assurance form to ODE by November fifteenth, twenty twenty one. The project objectives. To collect evidence to show compliance for each of the fifty seven requirements under Division twenty two. And I I like this being a a building administrator for many years and wondering what goes on at the district office. A lot. And again, fifty seven requirements. And it's it's probably a class they should have. Actually, I think every building administrator should get involved with this process to just show. Really what's involved with requirements for the Oregon Department of Education. And we, you know, we really do have a path to follow and show compliance with. Next, the evidence is collected and organized, allowing for evaluation, identifying strengths and areas of improvement. And then lastly, the district administrative team evaluates the evidence of each OAR and determines the district's compliance with Division twenty two. Now we're going to move to the findings. And this year we are using a new report for compliance. In the past, we've used a project charter to really collect the information. It's very much like the form that we've used in the past, but all districts are expected to use this with these dropdown menus. Again, we have fifty seven OARs that we go through with a fine tooth comb, taking a look, making sure that we are in compliance with. This page again shows that example. Next page. This is one that, again, we will, our district has this year, we've identified three areas in which we are out of compliance. For our district, and I contribute part of that to our interesting year last year. Dr. Kavista, if you'd like to add on that one.
Sure. So two of the areas, if you will remember last year, we made a decision. For state assessment. Normally, families have to opt out. And in this case, because of what we were working through, we actually shifted, knowing that we would be out of compliance, that if if families wanted to opt in. To testing, they could. We did have a small number of families that did opt in. It's going to, I'm going to say it's less than ten. But because we did that option, and again, we, as many other school districts, some school districts chose not to do any assessment. Many of us chose to do the opt in because of that, we are out of compliance. Both from the administration of the state assessment and then. The exceptions of the students with disabilities from state assessment as well, because both of those were opt in. Those will be rectified this year. We will do state testing. Across the district and that will be if families do want to opt out, we will go back to that process. For the twenty one, twenty two school year. So we'll be in compliance there. The second one is because we did not do universal screening last year. Throughout the year, we are out of compliance for the universal screening for risk factors of dyslexia. So we will be in compliance. Obviously with the reading standard or reading universal screener for reading that we're doing. That Mr. Funnery just shared with us. So we will be back in compliance for the twenty one, twenty two school year.
That's part of universal screening.
Correct, correct. Nope, that's part of the process. Yep. So we, again, we just want to, again, the everything else we feel good about. We know that there are some areas that we will continue to look at and improve. I, you know, we're in compliance, but there's always growth for and of improvement. And so we'll continue to work through. Those you also see in there, there were several, if you look at this. The specific snapshot. Essential skills, which is really tied to the high school that was waived for twenty twenty one. We also had some kindergarten assessment that was waived. So you're, again, some of those. Do not come into compliance for this, the twenty twenty one school year. So. Again, we will be back in compliance, but we do have to report to the state that we were out of compliance in these three areas.
Perfect. Thank you on that.
It shouldn't. No, no. And that's, again, there's a lot of grace from the Oregon Department of Education. Because of what we were working through, we you we will, or you will see this week. In the Friday report, we do have the at a glance, which is the Oregon State Report Card. Again. I will share its more demographics because, again, there was not a lot of state assessment. So. We will be sharing that that information with you and then we'll be posting that on our website here shortly.
Last year was pass fail for us, too.
Yeah. Something like that.
All right. So continuing on, again, we have a correction, a corrective action plan for three out of compliance and the three will be in compliance for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And that takes us to our last page and our next steps. We've shared the information. Now we'll post the Division twenty two outcome to our district website by the first. And then following the board report, Central School District will complete and submit the annual form to the Oregon Department of Education via Indistar by November fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Now we'll complete our district's Division twenty two requirements for this year. Any questions on that?
Is this your third time through Division twenty two? Or?
It's important.
Thank you so much.
You've got this nailed.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Sleep at night, Jason. Thank you very much.
Now, the 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 reporting Jason does to gather the information, although the form has changed, I do give him great credit. He links policies. So again, if there were to be any types of concerns, I mean, we have the documentation. He does a phenomenal job of gathering that. So I I thank him again for that. That was my superintendent. That is the extent of it.
Okay, so on the board report, three things I wanted to touch on. So. Thank you for the PLC meeting from a couple of weeks ago. And thank you again to the superintendent. And some of our leadership team for the prep work coming into that session. Where we had a chance to really chew on the strategic plan and how to bring that to life in a post-COVID world. We talked about the priorities being. Taking care of our kids, given the kids the the supports they need to to be ready to learn again and to start learning again. And then to ensure that we've got things like the screener and the curriculum and things like that lined up. And then lastly, the data dashboard infrastructure that we want to work on. To to really get to the point where we're using data to help identify priorities and. The areas that we need to focus on. So I thought it was a really good discussion and. Yeah, it's just just really good to see that. We did some board tune up work as well and. That led us into a discussion that Darcy and I have been having about the operating agreement. So that's the next topic. Let me segue into to that. So. This morning I sent to you all an updated version of the operating agreement. I color coded and read some changes that I've made. Since our PLC and since Darcy and we're working through some of her additional feedback. So we had been planning to review that and sign it tonight during or approve it and sign it tonight as a part of our business agenda. But I don't think we gave enough time to do that. We pulled it from the business agenda. Let me just highlight the changes that that we've made in it. So you can ask me questions or Darcy questions right now. So the first thing we added was a statement about treating each other with respect, really listening for positive intent. And we do get into a. Tense and, you know, a situation where there's, there's a lot of emotion. Make sure that we follow up with with each other and listen and work through those kinds of things and really. Demonstrate to the whole of the organization, all of the district, that that's how we, that's how we conduct this. So set the tone for the district. You'll see, you'll see that. Early on under our values. The other thing that I added was a statement that we do in fact set annual objectives for the superintendent and that we conduct an evaluation. I said on an ongoing basis, might want to change that to. You know, per our agreement and how we conduct evaluations. It's kind of one and the same, but the point is. We hadn't had anything in the operating agreement about setting objectives and conducting evaluation. So we thought, Darcy pointed this out, I thought it was a good idea to add that. So you'll see that. As part of the role of the board. Going on, I added a couple of things about being succinct in our meetings. And that was part of our board tune up a couple of weeks ago is how we use these meetings and keep working on these meetings and make them more efficient and effective. And we've even since discussed that with the superintendent. And you can already tell tonight that we're trying to do that. So shortening down some of the presentations, standpoint. Try to get our business done in a more efficient manner because our meetings have tended to get longer and longer. So we're trying to pull that back in. So you'll see a couple of comments in there. Or an operating agreement statement about that being succinct and stay relevant to the topic. And then also to limit the use of phones and electronic communication during the meetings so that we avoid distractions that can stay focused on what we're really, you know, here to talk about on the agenda. Then I changed the communication section. I pulled out the very prescriptive. You know, redirect a community member to the teacher principal department. Because I felt like that was overly prescriptive. I think we all understand that. We always want to resolve issues at the lowest possible level. Then I also added a statement. So I just, I I removed some language there and added a statement about when we as individual board members are approached. Respond to the community member. Offering, you know, acknowledgement and and suggestions. So many times those suggestions are to. Redirect to another, you know, place if that's what's necessary. And then I suggest in the operating agreement that the superintendent and board chair be copied on those responses. It's it's a good practice. It's not required. It's just a good practice. Under the role of the chair, I added a statement about following up with the superintendent. After our board meetings to look for opportunities to improve meeting efficiency and effectiveness, which we already do, but we call it out. after our board meetings to look for opportunities to improve meeting efficiency and effectiveness, which we already do, but we call it out here. We do it as a part of our agenda setting and we've gotten back to a process now where two weeks in advance of this meeting, myself, Jennifer, Darcy, Emily, we meet and discuss the agenda and how to organize the agenda. And in that, we've also started to debrief. So we're just calling that out as part of the role of the chair. And I think that's a, that's a, an appropriate addition that we've made. And that's it. So nothing too controversial, but what, what I'd like to do, since we don't have this on the business agenda, is first need to hear back from the superintendent, if there's any changes you'd like to see. And then I'd like to hear back from the board, just through an email. Let's do that by the end of the week, just respond with the quick, I'm good, or any other suggested changes. And then next month, we'll, we'll adopt it formally as a part of our business agenda. And in the meantime, we don't really have to approve it. We don't have to sign it. We should be living up to this already, you know? So it's just a formality to put it on the business agenda.
Can I add something to that? One of the things that we did coming out of the PLC meeting and even from our August retreat. I spent some time with my leadership team and we have, and we'll put that, I will put this in this Friday's report. Last Friday's report was specific to the agenda and preparing for the meeting. But we have laid out for the year, based off of our conversations, specific presentations, both at the board meeting as well as the PLC with room for flexibility, because we know we're going to have to make some of those adjustments. So you'll see a first draft of that in the Friday report this week.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I forgot to mention that. Byron, thanks for the email. That's, this is consistent with what I've written back to you. But basically Byron is asking about kind of what are the next steps? How do we keep moving in the direction of like, what are, what are the specific plans? How to review that in board meetings? And we had already talked about that in our agenda setting meeting. And we're going to really push and try to lay out the topics that are going to come here or into our PLCs that really underpin the priorities of the district, which I think is fantastic. So yeah, thanks for mentioning that. Okay, so that's the operating agreement. Everybody good with that? Any questions or make sense? Okay. And then third, the superintendent evaluation. So I've been talking with Darcy about this as well. And what I've asked, asked Darcy to lead superintendent evaluation process this year. We've been talking about doing some board training on this, making sure that we're clear on what the plan and the approach is going to be. In general, what we're thinking is we'll follow the recommended practices of OSBA, the standards that are part of that. But we will include specific objectives for the superintendent. And we will publish a timeline and that timeline will hold ourselves to. But there are other, you know, aspects like how do we collect feedback? How do you measure progress? There are probably things that we do need to, to sharpen up. And so I would suggest we form a committee to work with Darcy, probably a couple of other board members to focus in on how we want the superintendent process to run this year and for years to come. It's been a few years since we've done something like this. It's probably the seven years since we've done something like this.
I, I think we need to be clear with the community that you do evaluate me. I do not want that to be, right? I want to be, make sure that that's clear.
Yeah.
That, that, since I have been here, I have been evaluated every year by the board. I want to make that clear to the public.
Thank you. Yes, this is just improving the process. So being clearer about it. So if you have interest in being a part of that committee, which, right now, would you like to express interest in that?
I would be really interested in working on it.
Jan?
I would as well.
I'll be our committee.
Dawn?
They're calling me too, so I'll let Dawn.
It could be bigger, but I think three, just from scheduling standpoint. Anybody else have interest in it?
They get it under four, right? Cause four is a quorum, right?
Correct, right.
It's gotta be.
It's the three, yeah.
It's gotta be, that's right.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
There's only seven. If seven got together, the committee, there was four of us on here.
We'd have to follow public meetings, unless we could do it. Uh, okay, so Jan, Dawn, Darcy. Ask that you lead the improvement effort around our superintendent evaluation process. You, I guess, I think the next step would be to actually, you, Darcy, would reach out to Dawn. Peggy, or I'm sorry, Jan, and find a time to meet. And probably start with one of the documents, like the OSBA document, just read through that.
Did they, did they recently update ours?
That there are new stand, there are clearer standards and I, that have been identified through that process.
One of the things that Darcy had suggested is we do some more development work around the process. So the committee can, you know, recommend that back to the board if you think we should bring in OSBA. Do our own internal training at one of our PLCs. Something along those lines would be great.
And Darcy will wait for you to contact us for dates and times and locations. Tomorrow at 7:00 AM.
Tomorrow at 7:00 AM, you're gonna send us an email and we will read it.
That's, I like that, Dawn, that's excellent.
All right. And then lastly, we have our next PLC meeting on 25th. 25th. And it is going to be, we've part of already kind of looking ahead on topics. Uh, the potential to introduce a dual immersion program at IES, which has been discussed from time to time. And we're going to spend some focus time learning about what that would be and how that might work. That's at the PLC meeting on the 25th.
My calendar says it's at six, is it at six?
It is. PLC meetings typically run six to eight.
Okay. So Jan and I have an important question. Should we eat before we come to this meeting?
We will take care of that. We will take care of that. We will make sure.
Either way, it's fine. I didn't enjoy my dinner trail mix last.
All right. Any other questions on board matters or?
The other pieces are if we have room, and again, I'm going to be working with IES on their presentation. And obviously I want to give time for you all to ask questions of their committee that has been working extremely hard. We, if this is two hours, I would assume we'd probably be an hour if we did want to have a continued conversation about a facility assessment. We could do that the second half, I guess that would be, is that, are we comfortable with moving in that direction for the PLC?
Probably timely.
Okay.
All right, very good. That brings us then to our consent agenda. All right, we passed the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for that. Dawn, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please raise your right hand. That passes unanimously.
That's a good question. You may, no, it's not discussion and I'm not voting. Just a clarification question, are we going to make the financial report a standard part of the consent agenda?
That was one of the suggestions to speed up the meeting. And so obviously, as the chair will tell you, anytime you see something and any of your questions, you're welcome to pull it out. You could probably also ask a clarifying question before you approve it.
Yeah, I mean technically I should have paused there to see if there was any questions before I called the vote.
Yeah, actually I have a clarifying question. Um, Cease, can you remind me what the 200 funds are for? And where, where we get them and how we spend them?
Sure, absolutely. Uh, so in this report, I think what Peggy's talking about is the fund 2XX, which are our 200 funds, special revenue grants, donations and student money. So that amount, that $9.6 million as budgeted is for this year only. That includes the title funds, the IDA, which are students with disabilities. It includes the High School Success Act, the student investment account. So that plus all student body funds. So any fundraising students do, the fees they pay, that's all in there. So that's part of the 9.6. Obviously, that's a little more than we normally get because of the current year amount that we've chosen to appropriate of the CARES Act money. There's more CARES Act money, but we're only planning to spend some, this number's a little more than it typically is. But it includes every fund we have.
So that ESER money is in there.
What's that?
That ESER money is in there.
Yeah, the CARES Act money for this year, the amount of, that we proposed the budget committee and that you all adopted is, is a little over the 2 million mark. But the 9.6 is all of our funds that aren't general funded, aren't food. Yeah, I hear right.
Is that the, uh, the quote, COVID money?
But, oh, the COVID money is, is, is a part of this, yes. Yeah.
I know that that's been.
In the rest of the world, it's, you know, ARPA, American Rescue or CARES Act, the coronavirus. In schools, it's ESER, elementary and secondary school emergency.
And that's, that's public knowledge, correct?
Oh, sure. And then in your Friday report, Jen sent you specifically the ESER money out of that, as I mentioned, a little over 2 million, 2.3 million. And where we had originally budgeted it, thinking going into this year where we would spend that. And then I'm also going to track sort of where we are year to date and then the project. Because, and in fact, the report Jen sent you unfortunately is already outdated. Because being able to move some things around, for example, we got another small grant for Chromebooks. We won't be spending that money out of this fund. So I was, I basically gave each principal sort of a discretionary amount to spend for specifically for student events and activities. It's allowable expense under ESER at the principal's discretion, as long as it's to adapt things in response to the coronavirus protocols. So for example, they want to buy patio heaters for a wreath making event at the high school or the homecoming carnival. They can spend it out of this money and, and rather than having principals have to ask, hey, can I do this? Can I do this $500 thing? They've each made the high school, for example, 25,000, the lowest amount, our small elementary has 10,000. So they have discretionary money to spend. So this report will change the next time we see it.
Excellent.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Cease. Thank you for those small questions. I'll make sure next month we pause there before I call the question.
Oh, sorry to, sorry to extend the brief, briefend report. Um, we have not yet planned and submitted our plan for the ESER 3 money. So that's the next tranche, the last tranche. Um, we have until 2024 to spend all this money. Uh, but we haven't even submitted our plan yet. We're getting more information from principals. We're looking at environmental concerns, what else we might need for the next couple of years before we even submit a plan to OBE for that. So that's why you haven't heard yet about sort of a plan for that.
Okay, we'll look forward to that.
I know, sorry.
Okay, let's move on to our business agenda. We've got two topics in our business agenda. First up is our comprehensive curriculum design.
Yes, and with that, I'm gonna turn that over to our director, executive director of teaching and learning, Ms. Julie Hammond. So thank you.
Hello, how are you all? My life?
I believe so.
Okay. I feel like I need the feedback. All right. Thank you. Um, so the district has committed to performing a comprehensive curriculum design for our K5 English Language Arts. There are several companies that provide consulting services in this area. Prior work has been done in the district based on research by the International Center for Leadership and Education, or as some of us call it, ICKL or Icicle, depends on who, who's talking. Um, because of that foundation, the district is asking for the local contract review board to forego the competitive bid process and to approve a sole source procurement of $93,636 for implementation of ICKL's rigorous curriculum design process, including alignment of standards and instruction across K5. The suggested action is to prove the sole source procurement for curriculum design and coaching from ICKL or Icicle as per the attached information.
Was that a pause for question? Or were you getting ready to go and get something else?
Um, pause for question.
I just quickly, I, did you, did I hear you say that we have used this organization before? Is that correct?
We've consulted with the, the organization for the last couple of years, but with the stalling of COVID has interfered with the full implementation.
So we've consulted with them on this specific thing? We haven't used them for something?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
I think that one of the things that I like about the, the ICKL is, and I'm, I'm probably speaking more operations and policy. And of course, my role as a board member, member is policy. I'll try to keep it phrased that way. But the five step process that is embedded in this company focuses on unpacking standards, which is a, a difficult thing for newer teachers to learn. I would assume that more experienced teachers in our district, if they don't know how to unpack a standard, well, they've been given the opportunity to know how to do that. But this framework that I, I did quite a bit of research on this before the meeting. The framework does fit in with prior information. And so it's not like we're starting our teachers out with something that just fell out of the sky. And it's, I know there's some controversy with this company in a couple of states. Ohio, for some reason, got really upset with the president of the company. But that made no, no sense to me in terms of the solidness of the company. So I, I think that $93,000 is, I know it sounds expensive, but in a term, in terms of curriculum costs or training costs, that's really not that much. So I don't know.
And our goal with this is we're starting K5, but we also know that we'll probably do some work K8 and then continuing that conversation. Again, I'm gonna say holistically, K12. Uh, again, we've talked about the importance of doing vertical alignment across our standards. And we know that, that, that's some next steps to, to be able to do. This will help in that process.
It'll be tremendously helpful, yeah.
It, part of our, our consultation with them was that there has been a lot of really good work done in the district and that we do not want new language, new, but really looking at what we have and building on that and moving forward. Um, and they were very on board.
So I guess my other question was sort of related to that, the fact that you don't get much of anything for $97,000. Are we spending enough to get what we want here? We are building on, on the foundation that's already been laid. But I guess another way to ask the question is we just, did we just tell them what we wanted? And that they came back with this? Or did we start out with a $100,000 limit?
Um, so we actually started with, we had a contract last year that was under $50,000. Um, and with COVID, we didn't use all the days. So we started with the planning of the days that we still had coming to us. Um, and then talked about what is, what's reasonable in the time right now with staff. Um, but knowing we also have to accelerate into some of our practices. And so we, we planned out what a year would look like. Um, and with them, if there's a, a need for us to do additional time, that we would potentially ask for a contract adjustment. But we looked at what we thought would be reasonable for staff to be able to engage in during the school year.
And then if we, if we wanted to continue to work on this next year?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, and I want to be clear, our, you know, shifting back to in person has been a lot. Yeah, and, and I want to be clear, our, you know, shifting back to in person has been a lot for both students and staff. I want to be clear about that, that we are, there's some grace that we're continuing to do with staff as we get, I, I mean this, back on our feet, literally. Because they have, they have been in an environment of virtual learning for eighteen months, and now we're asking them to shift back again with other pieces that were, that are in that and knowing that we need to give them some grace, plus we're still dealing with cases and students being in and out of their classrooms. So we, we are, as I shared with you at the PLC, you know, we're moving forward, but as I've, as I've shared, we're going to do it with making sure that the supportive environments are there first, that everyone, again, the, there is, there is still stress on the system. And we're continuing to work with our staff and our students and, but this will help us take those next steps again in a, in a way that we are successful. So I want to be, be clear about that. And, and I think this is a first step for us to move in that direction and then just continue to, continue that collaborative approaches with both of our unions as we move forward.
And, and I will say with people being at their max, the fast bridge training, the reading training that folks have been a part of, the equity training, all these different things that staff continue to have positive attitudes, they're working hard, advocating for students and families. So it's impressive, the staff that are in this district. And so we just want to be really careful that we don't like, hey, here's some more, let's go, that we really want to be responsive to. Yeah, yes. Yeah, and I think that staff are actually happy to see some more of the framework and coming back to the work that has been done in the past to like bringing it together and it's a framework.
Yeah.
See where we're going, what's happening. Yeah.
Is, is part of this process, I've been with enough companies who have purchased consulting services like this, they implement the program and then the consultants leave and that program just goes to crap.
Right.
Is part of this, the organizational or structural analysis on how to make this stick as well? Do we have, are we right sized at the district level to make sure that we have people paying attention to this to going after, after the consultants are gone? Is that part of this? I didn't, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, so it's definitely looking at building something that's sustainable and so that we don't do something that relies on a person that isn't in the district. So building the systems within the schools as well. Part of the work last year was just making some connections with building principles, which is very small, they have a lot of time. But it is looking at the instructional leaders in the schools and building folks up like that. So like our trainer, the trainer models. And so it isn't a person leaves and all goes away. Because we do need to be sustainable that when a principal leaves or a coach leaves superintendent, that things keep moving. And things have continued to move over the last many years, but I think we are knowing and seeing this in our data and the needs of our staff and our students and families that we do need it more solidified and a much more in a more planned.
Integrated in.
Yeah, and I would also say they're going to be years that we have to do a reboot, right? Again, we have added in a lot of new staff. Anytime you look at adding in, I mean, we've added over a hundred, I think it's a close to a hundred, I feel like a hundred teachers, I think it is.
A hundred people.
A hundred people, I mean, but again, at least forty, I'm, I'm just thinking back to our training at the beginning of the year. Almost forty teachers, that's the most since in my tenure that I've been here of just new positions that we've hired in or new staff that we've hired in. And so we are going to have some years when you do have some changeover at what I call a reboot or just making sure we're all on the, the same page. And so I think it's a combination of how do we build our capacity internally and then when and what time do you bring in to just make sure that we're still moving in the right direction and have some, I call it, other eyes. Because even all of us in the district, from our teachers to administration, it's always good to have additional eyes to say, hey, you guys are doing a great job. If you make these tweaks, it's going to make it better for both your students and your staff. So again, I think those are the bigger conversations that we'll, we'll continue to have and, and this is a big part of that. All right.
Does this become a part of one of our, you know, agenda topics for future board meetings where we check in on the progress?
So when we talk, when we talk about the three objectives that we shared with you, supportive learning environments, the data dashboard and quality instruction, this is quality instruction. So this will be part of our updates on where we are and, and how we're doing through that process, absolutely.
Good. Any other questions from the board? We'll entertain a motion.
I approve that we approve this whole source special book as presented.
Second. Thank you, Byron. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And then last, I'm going to just turn it over to Cease to just, again, that this is our error. We, we did leave off one name, so we apologize that this is coming back to you, but she will share more.
At your July meeting, we presented this and interestingly enough, there was an extra whereas with nothing after it. And that was where I was supposed to add in Julie Hallman's name. We are fortunate now to have a little bit more capacity in the district. And so she is doing less actual procurement of things and therefore being another set of eyes who is able to sign. Or on behalf of the district, either board authorize things as we just authorized this contract with Icicle, I call it. Oh, or if it's under the procurement limits and the board doesn't have to go to it, just our daily contracts that we sign. So having another person available is helpful and ask that we add her into this.
Any questions for Cease?
No.
Do you hear a motion?
And we adopt the updated operating resolution, authorizing positions as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jan. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. That motion passes unanimously. Very good. So that brings us to our wrap up. Time for any board members to share closing comments before we adjourn into executive session. That they'd like to share tonight?
Just, just going to say, I appreciated the effort that was put forth at short, at the end of our presentation. Didn't feel like we'd lost out on any information or the ability to discuss anything.
Thank you, Superintendent and Board Secretary for the prep work.
I, I have a request, looking at this, the personal recommendations report that we get, I'm wondering if we might be able to get with this also running tally of open positions that have, that we have yet to fill. And that includes teachers and athletic positions, other ancillary positions. So we have an idea, bus drivers, yeah.
Classified and certified.
Yeah, just everything so we can have a, an idea of what's open, how close we are to.
You, I guess my question would, do you want that in the board or in a Friday report? We could, we could do potentially either once a month or twice, twice, twice a month potentially in, in the Friday report as well. So we have either option to be able to do that and show that information.
The reason this is in your order, only the school board can hire or terminate licensed teachers and administrators. So this, that's why the hiring termination of licensed teachers or administrators is in your board report. But the other, as Jen said, maybe a little more often, sort of a running tally in the Friday.
What, what, twice a month or?
Once a month, this is for me. In, in this document, but that's just me.
I think once a month is good.
Okay.
It's probably something that's somewhat timely now, but doesn't, maybe doesn't need to be ingrained in our stuff that we then have to figure out. We don't need to do it four years from now when we only have two openings anyway. Certainly now, I agree, it's nice to have a sense of how big of a hole do we have in staff.
Opening positions? Yeah, correct. If you, if you go to our, yes, if you go to our district website, yeah, that and our human resources where our, where our postings are, that is are currently all of our open positions, but we, we can be able to pull that and at least share that with the board. Again, I will tell you things like we're constantly working, even as we were in our leadership meeting today. You know, finding subs, we continue to work from a sub perspective and what that looks like. So we're, again, I think that's a big part of, of our continued. We do feel good, I will just add this last part, we do feel good, we are very close to the K twelve vaccine mandate, which really is October eighteenth. We have less than one percent of our staff that has not turned in documents. That's, that's very good.
Yeah.
And we're continuing to see that list dwindle. So like I said, we, we, we will continue working through that. We actually have late meetings throughout this week just to make sure we don't have any surprises leading up to, to Monday.
Well done.
So I, I give credit to our staff. They've done a really good job and, and I will say publicly, I am very appreciative to the leadership of both unions and how they have worked with us side by side to help us as we work through this.
Good job, leadership.
I'd like to give compliments to all the people that work in Central School District because it would be really easy to make excuses about, well, we can't do this or can't do that because of last year. And it's too hard. And instead of that, I hear joy and happiness about being able to do their jobs again, no matter what the job is in the district. And it's really heartening to listen to reports about, for instance, the, the the universal screener and the return to gathering data to make sound educational judgments about what children need. And about training the, the K five people on not a brand new model that just showed up out of the universe, but instead something that's tried and true, but they can, they can adjust it to, to a teaching style that fits them. But everybody accomplishes the goal of moving the children forward. I think the, to use a science term, the inertia that we had to overcome to get this train moving out of the station was enormous. And I, I really think that we need to compliment every single person that works in this district and all of the parents and all of the community for, for moving forward and not making a bunch of excuses. I mean, I know there are districts around where it's constantly whining and there are valid reasons for whining sometimes. But overall, this is, hey, we can do this and we can move forward. So whoever's listening out there, I think that, you know, pat yourself on the back. And this seems like the high school, I know that all the other schools do it also. But the high school has been so creative about ways to keep the celebrations. The one that's going to go on, I think it's Saturday for homecoming at the gate. I mean, there's so many wonderful activities that are COVID avoiding and healthy for kids where they can come together. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy.
Thank you, Jan. Well said. Okay. We'll be going ahead and wrap up this section and move into executive session. So under the provision of ORS one nine two dot six six zero open meeting law, the board of directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member or individual agent. Specific information discussed in the executive session shall not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. Board may return to open meeting to take action on executive session discussion if needed, but that's not expected. We are assured.